To order for April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Members of the Grand County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby or duty their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflict of interest and to appearance of such conflict and further are introduced to refrain from participating in any matter presented before the Board of County Commissioners with respect which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Les Prime. Good day, Heavenly Father, just thank you for this glorious day that you've given us. And Father, as you know, there's things going on in our counties and we just ask that you just continue just to give your support. And Father, best of all for those who are sick and ill, we just ask that you just continue just to touch and heal their bodies and just comfort their families. Father, we ask that you just be with us, that gives us the knowledge and the understanding. And Father, just be with each and every one in the coming days. And Father, we just ask for your, your understanding and your support. And Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask of you in your precious and holy name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Megan. Will you mute yourself?
Do what?
Will you mute your homes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nine, two, five, United States of America. To the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a heart and justice for all. Approval of the agenda, any changes or anything needs to make to the disposition?
If we could delete item number six, she was unable to make it tonight.
Okay, with the additions and deletions of the agenda, do we have a motion to accept? All in.
Station.
All favor. Approval of the menus for special meeting two, three, budget meeting two, twenty-six, and budget meeting two, twenty-seven. Motion.
Stand.
All favor. Mr. Gap, you're up next.
I'm just gonna give you an update on the snowboard side, finished in thirteen weeks. I'm sort of made it in the little building. Something to start thinking about. There's warning keys, I don't think you do, I can get with you and talk to them about. But I don't know if we're gonna do the lab and fix site two, it's a smaller building, I'd like to keep it down there. Over. That too, we're gonna blow them there. Something to be thinking about, because we may be waiting on that too, if I notice the weight.
Okay.
That's all I have. It's the one hope that it's always.
You mean you've got nothing? That's good. Oh, man, that's quick.
I'm off, just give my own.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you, guys. Okay, Mr. Jason.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cody and the Deacon's Board and everybody. Um, should have, let me get this. You should have the, uh, board, or excuse me, my report in front of me there. Give you a copy of that, we'll go down the list. Do have some things that are updated, of course, some that aren't. The first one, obviously, we're still working on a location for our justice center. Commissioners are well aware of that and working on that. The next one, item two, after the last meeting, the Lord wanted me to communicate with the through the jail preferably in sheriff's offices as opposed to right directly with the state. But I ended up having to email both the jail and the state, and I've got an email. Commissioner Williams, I can give you the, if you want to see the email back and forth about the jail, the services that we talked about. They, basically, they're not gonna commit to whether they would allow one person to be a couple of statements quoting from the Health and Human Services. One quote, I'm not qualified to make a determination about whether a particular method is appropriate to address this issue. And then there's another one, they were gonna buy their chain of man. Uh, I did explain, it seemed like there was some confusion. They wanted, they said they initially wanted a plan in place, how we were gonna do it, and then a timeline. Well, I, I went back, my last email was April the ninth, and I went back to them and I explained, well, we did this twice last year. Did the best we could to budget what we could, and the, the, number one, we didn't have enough business when we could accept the one. Had to do the second time. Second time, he came in forty percent above what we budgeted for the project. I felt like maybe he didn't know that, because that's as good a plan as you can guess. His bid had been added in the budget and came in with the commissioner's budget set for the project, we would have went for it, worked on the work we've done. So I explained again, depending on what the commissioners approved for the budget for the jail and the as and that department, we'll do the same thing in July. We approve a budget to do the work. And, uh, we go out and meet again, we'll do the work, get it done. So I couldn't get a commit from my, which I tried, uh, but they didn't want to get in. But I'm glad, I'm, I'm happy to forward this to the commissioner and you detain that of the email, if you want to look at it, you're welcome to see it. But that's where we are once we, I guess, go forward with our, I said, ratifying your budget for the year before we can go forward on anything to jail would be after July one. Item two, again, the biggest issue with the painting up there is obviously we've got to find some more grant money. We, working with Ms. Chris, uh, we've asked for different people through federal and our statement of slavery and other grant entities to try to put some more money to get the EMS paving done. So we'll continue to work on this the best we can. Great news, obviously, with the number four and five, that's both of our, um, DHT supplemental home reconstruction on two forty-three, which is number four. Uh, that project is obviously already started. And, uh, probably by the next meeting for both of these, I'll, I'll begin showing if the, if the board, maybe the board didn't want that the last time, but it's a good way to show you the progress of the projects. If you would like, I could potentially have enough to start showing the progress on our slides and put together a PowerPoint, if that's the way you guys would like to see it, I'm very glad to come up to show you where we're all about. But right now, they've just started, they've got a basic, I was up there yesterday, they got a basically, the first that, the mobile home is demoed, and they've already taken some materials to, to the sanitation, and they're getting the site cleaned up. So I'll be able to show once we get that cleaned up and they start the foundation of the two forty-three, uh, at least get some site work done, I'll be able to show before and after for the next meeting, and then thereafter, um, going forward. So the storage on two forty-three, four branch storage containers were delayed on March the eleventh, took great power was available, but basically, they started onsite was April the tenth. Like I said, demolitions are, you have to wait on most of it, it's all separated, and just have to clean the site up, it's showing about six percent. And obviously, there's reporting required with several of these projects, so we'll continue working with Ms. Carpenter, with our finance office will require to do the financial reporting. Most of these are quarterly and, and progress report. And then fifty-six is number five, that is sixty-six Atoa. We had, and we completed the kickoff meeting, which was April third, all documents signed, have attended a plan for next Monday to have the storage units onsite for that project and give them, we can get them ample time to empty out their personal belongings and then maybe move from this side to that side. And then, once that project gets started, like I can include that in our presentational status monthly as well. What I would ask the commissioners to do is to consider, uh, Mr. Collin, we've talked some if you want to, this is obviously it's a county project, if they would consider and vote on waiving the permit fees officially and the dumping fees for both those projects.
I'll read that question.
Okay. All favor.
Thank you. Now, Gavin can start me at that end. Gavin's been great, he's, uh, he's awesome to help us with whatever we need on, on the project, so he's been really good to help us, I appreciate it, yeah. Ms. Franch, uh, we'll meet tomorrow, that's number six, item number six, we'll meet tomorrow and go over some things with our attorney. Uh, most of the agreements are signed, there, I spoke to, um, Commissioner Nels about the licensing, there's still questions on the licensing that Mac is supposed to get some answers for us tomorrow, we'll talk more hopefully tomorrow. Uh, I'm hoping Mac asked me last week, and I gave him a listing, and all we can discuss go over for tomorrow's meeting, so hopefully he'll, we'll have got the schools attorney answer, we can have those to discuss tomorrow. Um, item seven, um, that is another set of steps, working with Mr. Matt Smith of the Cemetery Board. They actually were trying to get them in for decoration, which I think is in May the nineteenth, I think May, I think it's nineteenth. Anyway, we're trying to get this set of steps that Santila Church, a lower part of the cemetery installed, uh, by hand for decoration, and they, where they formed it today, and we're waiting to do concrete. So depending on, as everybody knows, it's concrete, and it's crazy. You're, you're two weeks out from scheduling, and then what's bad is they want you to get an alternate day, and that alternate day is not the next, it's, could be another two weeks out. So, yeah, it's, I've never seen it, even like in concrete wise, so, but the good news is I've at least got it formed, I believe, I believe it's done today for forms, little little site work to do, and then we'll be ready to place concrete, hopefully have anybody's alterations. Um, then the last item I'll go over would be sanitation. Um, as I said, we've also been working with Ms. Chris, trying to get some money, we really, really need to do some work for his coming out there. We've got prices in place, and that's gonna change more and longer, we really need to, I'd love to be able to work with Mr. Collin and get some stuff done at sanitation, we've got a master plan. It's not a complete master plan, but I, I went over it with Mr. Collin, and I think he liked the layout, I would work with it each year to go off, I mean, we just move, maybe work piece meal and get that project done, and get the building worn down, and get it, as soon as possible. We'll work to find more money. Other than that, if there's any questions for me, that's all I've got. Thanks, Jason, thank you.
Ms. Stacey.
All right, you have a final points of discussion in front of you, uh, for tonight's meeting. This is for the period ending March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. You have a copy of the Amendment eleven in your pocket. This is mainly the Health Department is needing some interim interdepartmental transfers in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to request funds to other supplies and to cover salaries for the remainder of the fiscal year. That's the majority of it, and then the Agriculture Extension Office needed funds in the amount of six thousand twenty-four dollars to complete the fiscal year and the retirement line, and this is due to under budgeting in the past. So we have corrected that with this upcoming budget, so it's more of her and him. So, and I will need a motion to approve the Amendment number eleven. It is, I mean, in the general fund, the appropriations are the decrease and the increase are two hundred and thirty thousand and twenty-four dollars.
Okay, I'm asking to accept the Budget Number Eleven with a balance total of two hundred and three twenty-four thousand. Motion. All favor.
I'm sorry, I'm doing. You should have a little calculation sheet in the back, I'll have y'all all sit there and do it. So I've started out a calculation sheet right behind me, so hopefully it helps. Okay. So moving along at LGC, and with us being on the realist, we're continuing to have our check-ins monthly with our coach, which is Tim Green. And I believe as of last night, all of the board training what's required have been done and completed. Um, we also had to submit, um, the budget to actual reports, they were today, um, to Tim Green, so that was, um, through the period ending March thirty-first. We had to stand to take him a budget to actual report, he has reviewed it, and given me the okay that everything's looking good and in order. And we also had to submit a draft budget to him. I did advise him that it was, um, being for the final version of it, was just y'all giving me the draft in to finish balancing it, and I had to present the final, uh, version to you tonight. So you do have, that's the big sheet, is, is your copy of the budget that is balanced, um, and it hasn't been submitted to him in the, in the form of a draft. So, um, his request now is that as soon as you have approved it, for me to get to work and get the work that's put together. So we will need a motion tonight to accept the budget as it is presented to you. Unless you want to discuss if our, or in the draft budget, it's the draft budget.
So we're, so we're basically approving the draft.
You're approving only a draft.
Okay, because as we were saying, um, it's not technically due until.
Period and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we need a motion to adopt the draft budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. You have a second? All favor.
Moving on, and just an audit update, the auditors, and we're here all of last week, and some of the prior week completing their field work for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and we've answered final questions today, unless they shoot something else back, which we're hopeful that they, that we're done. Um, the anticipated date of filing with the LGC is the thirtieth of April, and they are to present to the Board of Commissioners and to the county on, uh, our next board meeting, which will be on May the twentieth. And so we are continuing to work hard on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four field work, uh, so that we can submit it just as soon as they're completed with this next one. So we should jump right in on the tails of this one. And also, there is an income statement attached, um, in your pocket as well. For March, our income was one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and seven cents, which brings our year-to-date to seventeen million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. You also have a copy of your expenditure statement attached. Um, it also has, um, it highlights the departments that their ideal is a little, or their actual is a little bit higher than their ideal. And so if you have any questions about that, I can get you further information after the meeting, but you do have that in your pocket. And for March, our expenditures were one million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents, which ranges our year-to-date to sixteen million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. You also have, um, a copy of the property tax collections report in your pocket, and our collections for the current year that were collected in March was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The collections for prior years that was collected in March was nine thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our total collections for the tax year twenty-twenty-four was eight million, seven hundred and eight and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents, with a balance of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four dollars and thirty-three cents left to be collected. And our collection percentage over March is ninety-four point eight five percent.
Per unit? Because we were, we were calculating ninety-three.
We're doing very well. And as far as our sales tax collections, you also have a copy of that report, and it's the February, um, collections that we just received in April, so they do month, they do run two months, um, behind. And so our collections for February is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. That brings our year-to-date collections up to two million, four hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Out of that, we have sales tax, um, set aside for the schools, so their portion of the sales tax for the month of February was forty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents, which brings their year-to-date to five hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and forty-nine cents. They do have in draw requests right now that would have to be approved at this meeting tonight, and, and I've got them listed in your pocket there. So they are requesting, um, um, this for a mower at eleven equipment in sales, an amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, they're purchasing a maintenance truck from First Choice Automotive Corporation in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. They're purchasing a bathroom call pass system through Smart Pass in the amount of one thousand, sixty-three dollars and ten cents. And, and with the greenhouse may store, this is just a portion of the fair replacement that the law refunds wouldn't want to cover, so they requested six thousand, one hundred and forty, fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. And they had to make gazebo repairs after the land storms, and so the, um, loans billed for that was two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. And then, um, the elementary school in the central office had leaks that were discovered during these heavy rains, so cops and ru, or cops and staff briefing, um, expenditures of nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And then they did just do some repairs on the split rail fence that's at the high school, so the loans bill for that was seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. So their total request, um, for this meeting is forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents, and their available balance that's not already carved and committed is two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, three hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-two cents. So they do have that available, we just have to have the motion to approve that I'm paying down these funds.
More for a mower than a truck?
Yeah. Does, do we have any credit for that mower?
I have, um, hold on, I have more. I did put it in your pockets, I wasn't sure how much you wanted, let's see. The mower is, um, a Toro four thousand zero, series zero turn mower, um, and it's eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, and then by the time you add the blower drive kit and the rear baggy, then it, it adds that up, by talking about the sales tax. And then, the, um, the work truck is a twenty-seventeen Ford, have two fifty super duty, and they were getting out from First Choice Automotive Corporation in the amount of fourteen eight. Fourteen eight.
Leonard? How does that compare with the mowers that are sanitary about? Could?
This is a lot more, because, um, the cemetery has not get the baggers and the blower that actually stood to blow it up in there, and that's additional costs that they're adding to, but, so, they're picking, as words, they're picking up the Cleveland's and where, uh, the cemetery group is, does not.
So, other than the, like, the mower is pretty normal?
Yeah, it's about the same, because they're running, they're, the, uh, they're running about ten to twelve thousand dollars for a zero turn, that size, for that size of mower.
What we, what did you do?
I'm sorry. The mower?
Yeah.
Does FX one thousand sixty, does that mean?
Uh, I just wondered what the, like, width was.
It's a Toro four thousand series, zero turn mower, seventy-four oh twenty Kawasaki FX one thousand sixty.
Well, they did say, it's usually forty-eight or fifty-two or something like that, eh?
Hmm.
Maybe just didn't get on that, but similar without the attachments.
Hmm, yeah, they have the attachment.
The attachment to the blower kit is another sixteen hundred dollars, and then the backer is another twenty-seven hundred dollars, and then by the time you add tax to it, you bring to the sixteen thousand eight.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a motion to accept the expenditures for the school?
Yes, for me to issue payment to them for these draw requests in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the school.
Right. All favor.
And then for the quarter cent set aside for February, our collections were seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents, which brings our total today to one million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. And then as far as our vehicle tax collections, and March collections were just now paid in April, and then we received that in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-six cents, which brings our year-to-date collections to five hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. And that is the end of my report, unless you have any questions.
Do you have any further comments? If not, we'll move on to the discussion items. Need a motion to accept the releases and the disclosures of, releases of a hundred and fifty, uh, one hundred and fifty-six dollar and fifty-three cents, disclosures of five thousand, eight fifty-three, forty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Stand.
All favor. HVAC election board?
Yes, we're still, um, working with Andrew's Heating and Cooling to get, um, the HVAC completely, uh, fixed. It's not worked since day one, so we are still under warranty, so they are working with us. The part we hope will be here by next week, they first said eighteen weeks, but they think we can get it here now, a lawsuit. Just want to give that as a date for a matter of record.
Okay. Next item is contract review for retail.
Uh, we do not have a current sand so cheap, um, report against the people who knew the dams, so if you are wanting to stay with this company, we can reach out and ask them to give us a, um, quote of what they would charge.
We have a motion to accept, um, for the dams. That's the ones that.
To go, yeah.
They're the ones that done it last time.
And they say it was a law, one of the.
Yes.
Second. All favor. Mr. Ferris?
He is the only, um, bid that we've received, and I've got it all in your pocket, I think it's a, they're stapled together probably in the, off to the side. Is this for a best top revaluable contract? Looks like the total project that that included the hydro dams, so we would take twenty-four thousand out of two hundred and six thousand, seven hundred, so I think it would be the one eighty-two, seven hundred to do ten thousand, one hundred and fifty parcels.
So that would really be done in a one day period, so.
One eighty-two seven, I think, because we were at.
Oh, you already set that up.
And it is time to get started. Um, we've advertised twice.
Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Ferris's bid with that exclusion? Do we have a second?
Do we need a second? I don't know, when I was out speaking with the citizens. Had a lot of discussion. With them, are there any of the firms that we know of that, that do that type of work? Three, four, five.
Which papers, Randy would sit back and watch me in, but it would have been in all the, the four surrounding counties, usually, always.
Do you, do we know of any of the other folks that do this kind of work in, in the four surrounding counties?
I think it does.
All of the others?
Yeah.
Does he? We're pretty much. So I'll later in the motion and then agree.
I have a motion and a stay.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor say, those opposed? Okay, notice of holiday closing. Somebody want to close for all?
We will be closed this Friday for Good Friday.
This coming Friday. So we have bids for the two thousand and sixteen Ford Interceptor and also the nineteen ninety-five Ford F three fifty. And also the two thousand and eight Ford truck.
We see the bids out. I don't know what we have back. They they present an envelope sealed back to me, so I don't know if they. Were putting a bid for more than one in each envelope. I'm not sure.
This one says it's for the ninety-five Ford F three fifty. Some are burned and they have to be a five eighty-nine, ninety-nine. This is a lead table and says nineteen ninety-five Ford F three fifty and they have a thirteen hundred dollar bid.
How much?
Thirteen hundred. This one, I don't know what it's for. This one is for the nineteen ninety-five Ford F three fifty. They bid seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and it's a J Holly. And this one is for the twenty-seventeen Vietnam Police Car Sanitation yard. So I guess that's twenty sixteen.
Which one of these yards is?
It's got to be the nineteen sixteen four.
Yeah, we have a Sabreton nineteen ninety-five and two thousand. But you probably came out and said, I mean, you know, it's still selling.
This is W. Jordan, and they are bidding twelve hundred dollars. And this one is for the twenty sixteen forty-four. And this is the D. Jordan, and they've been eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I see below the minimum.
Yeah. Nobody did on the two thousand and eight Ford truck here, so. Looks like the top bid for F three fifty is thirteen hundred dollars.
This is board of rotation except the bid for thirteen hundred dollars for nineteen ninety-five F three fifty.
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
We have a second? All favor. Okay, two thousand and sixteen, we will accept those bids or do we want to reject?
No, they have no evidence and they have a magnet.
One can close, one's twelve hundred.
So average. More than three hundred?
No.
I put it in the other papers, but I put it just in our grade star. Yeah. You want to lower the minimum bid from the twenty-five hundred or keep it at the twenty-five hundred? Does need to come.
Twenty sixteen at fifteen hundred minimum bid, so.
That's the one. Yeah, it's the same one. It's a sixteen.
Well. I think it does to take a lesser amount of fifteen hundred. And if equals out, then. We might as well like set it five hundred dollars if I could.
This will be the fourth round of advertising.
Oh, is it? Second to move.
Okay. All favor.
And we didn't have anything on the two thousand and eight Ford for it.
You want to lower that minimum? That's the first time we ran that.
Any miles just go.
I think we've been much longer than the minimum on that drive.
Yeah, we're good.
We used it.
So there's a motion to go ahead and drop it then.
In our reality, it's forward, I don't know if it's fine. The sergeant makes nothing for part of the road, but he's got a problem and he's tired.
Okay.
I just am a little bit honest about this.
Well, that's what I knew.
I'd have to give it all away, I mean, five, seven hundred dollars maybe because of the crap and things like that. But now it's got a two bed on it, it's got a two bed, it's just got a lot of installers. I can try it down the lot, but I don't know.
I'm here to try and.
Okay, so I should reduce it. We have a second?
Second.
All favor.
How many years have we used the truck?
Only five.
Okay, yeah.
Y'all, we've done its job. We've got the truck, we just, we found it's a problem.
Okay, next item is approval of vote for the radio and computer.
That was for the radios, for the bike radios and the computer equipment was for that, the grant that Dawn had gotten with the health department.
Two, three. All.
Second.
All favor. The write-off, three bills for sanitation are eighty-five dollars and sixty cents for road repairs.
Yes, sir. We we do have debt side setup, but these are below that price. And then one is a baggage rest. I can't get it older, so it's a total of three bills is a total of the eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. I can't collect them. We're going to spend more in stamps if I see, keep seeing the amount, so.
Yeah, I think a motion that we write those bills off.
Oh, I was.
If you were budgeting.
Uh, it's a Brookfield Recreation Plan contact request counter for the end, so I guess that's a request for someone to participate.
Yes, sir. It says, my manager asked me to reach out to see if the county has appointed anyone to represent your interest in our recreation plan meetings. As related to Lake Santiva and the Chior River. According to him, there was someone years ago that would take part in meetings and offer feedback on recreation projects and high flow events. But there's been little, no interest from the county for a few years now. We would love to have the county represented during our planning so that we can address the needs of the local community while addressing general tourism. Thanks for your time. I didn't know if you wanted the incoming county manager or if you want him and a person for travel tourism. What what's the pleasure of the board?
Um, well, Megan and Brady met with Daniel Allison, Amber Allen at Travel and Tourism. And I'm not speaking for them. They're not here, but I believe they are all interested in. Participating in those talks. Which I understand, and I'll apologize ahead of time if I am wrong on that. I don't think so.
I'll send an email.
Okay, that is.
And if any of the other board would like to participate, that would be very sweet. Okay.
Okay. Notice of public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for June seventh.
So do you want to have it in May instead of June? That's why I brought this to the board. So we do have to have a public hearing. It has to be submitted to the clerk, lay on the desk for ten days so the public can come and review. The sooner the better for Stacy if we can go ahead and get that done. But I have to make that, the the board has to request the date that they want to hold the public hearing.
And we're ready to do that? Point is the earliest date that that we would be ready to do.
I mean, the budget is balanced. There are a few things that I would like to check. Probably at the end of April if possible, just to double check some of those restricted funds to make sure we haven't spent out any of those. And just, but those will be offsetting each other on the revenue and expenditure side, so I'd like to just give it a last look over before we. But like I said, it's balanced, so just minimal changes.
I don't have a calendar, so if you would, please give me a minute.
I just have to back it up ten days, whatever that looks like, to the May meeting, which is on the twentieth.
And May twentieth, the auditorium that you're presenting as well.
I think if you present it to the, to us, to me on the sixth. And then it'll wait for ten days. I'll write it in the paper, schedule the public hearing. For the twentieth, and you can decide. Something happened, excuse me, if something happens and you don't approve, that's okay. You have some proof still.
We still have time.
You have to use your free time.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we schedule those dates.
Okay, we have a second?
Yes.
May sixth and May twentieth.
May sixth and May twentieth. We have a second? All in favor? Okay. Do we have any other business or things we need to, before we go into class session? Okay, now that we're going to class session, energy is one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven. Eight, one, three, five, and six, privilege or confidential information attorney-client privilege, personal and contracts. We have a motion?
Sounds good.
We have a second? All favor?